I'd like to return our city council to open session. And make a few comments early on, of course Sally lost her mother Joyce Willard. And our condolences to you and your family Sally, and I know you'll be going to Little Washington for another service at the end of the week, and be careful and Godspeed, and wish all your family. Our condolences, and Alfred losing Diane was, she was an institution to us, and we want to express all of our condolences to you and your family. And if there's anything we can do, please don't hesitate to call home, please.
Thank you.
All right, at this time I'll call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation.
I just heard about Diane, and I wanted to express my sincere sorrow about that. I've known Diane for a long time. I've even known, knew her mother, and she's gonna be missed around here Al, and I know you know that's true. And our prayers and our thoughts are with you, really. I was wondering if any of you saw the program Henry Ford the other night? Anybody see that? It was long, and it was telling about his life and his works and so on. And the fact that he was, from the beginning of his days, he was a genius. He was always interested making something new. And he was never content with what he made, he always wanted to improve it. Two people are not old enough, but the first Ford used to have a crank on the front of him, you know, and he moved it to the starter for the inside, which I think was a real improvement, and but he really was a genius from the word go. The thing that impressed me about him, he wasn't always a good guy, but the thing that impressed me about him was that he was always working to build an automobile that would be for the common good. That would be something that would be affordable to the ordinary person, and he actually started a line, you know, he could produce 5,000 cars a day, and that way for me, for people could afford to do it, people afford to buy one. When I came to Morganton, well, I'll step back a minute, I want to say that this is President's Month, and I think as you would agree with me that the great Presidents of America have been those Presidents that have worked for the common good. You take Lee, Robert A. Lee, Abraham Lincoln, George Washington, these people, their desire was to contribute to America, to make America the greatest it could be. When I came to Morganton, I really appreciated Morganton, and I want to say that, I'll allow you to hear me say this many, many times, but it's just a wonderful place to live. And in the environment, and the mountains, and the lakes, and so on. Being a College of Forestry graduate, they appealed to me very much. But one of the things that appealed to me are the people, and the meaning of the lives of the people here that really appreciate Morganton and what it means to them. And so I stand before you tonight because I want to challenge you, I want you to realize that God has given each one of you a genius. You are capable of far more than you ever imagined you could be. And that Morganton being the place where it is, see, I even wore a sweater tonight, I didn't wear a tie, which I should have worn, but I was trying to be part of the common good, is what I was trying to do. But don't dismiss that early. God has given you a genius to be in Morganton, but Morganton needs you to be for the common good. I have a prayer which is one of the Psalms. Have you not known? Have you not heard? The everlasting God, the Creator of the ends of the earth, fainteth not, neither groweth weary. There's no searching of His understanding. He gives power to the faint, and to those who have no might, He increases their strength. Even the youth shall faint and be weary, and young people shall utterly fall. But they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up on wings like eagles. They shall run and not be weary. They shall walk and not faint.
Thank you Steve. Introduction of our city council, on my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, City Councilman, Forrest Fleming, City Councilman, Louie Vina, our City Attorney, I'm Mel Cohen, your Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Sidney Simmons, City Councilman, John Cantrell, City Councilman, Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary, and Becky Brinkley, interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I have a unique duty of presenting our City Manager, not going to ask her to talk, because she talks enough in our meeting, but a 20-year pen, she's been here forever. Congratulations Sally.
Thank you.
You can say anything you'd like to say, if you want to.
It's been a privilege, and I appreciate the 20 years.
Well, thank you very much. Public advocacy issues and strategies, in order not to have you hang around too long, Steve, I'm gonna let you come forward and let you say what you want to say, if you don't mind, the microphone here, and state where you reside, if you would.
Yeah, thank you for hearing me. I'm Steve Ivester, I was raised here in Morganton, I live in Hickory. I pay about $700 of taxes in Morganton, and over $2,000 of taxes in Burke County. All my life, when I've lived in this area, I've drank from the public water system, both in Morganton and Hickory. Several days ago, it was brought to my attention that there was a water spill of some 1.8 million gallons from the wastewater treatment facilities here in Morganton. Now, you know, I drink that stuff. I was made aware that neither WMNC, nor the News Herald, nor the Charlotte Observer had received the required 48-hour notice, and that the only notice that came out was the 10-day notice, legal notice, on this 1.8 million gallons. I was also told that the City Manager of Valdez had no knowledge until the legal notice came out. I called the City, the Water Manager in Hickory, and he said, "I had no notice until the legal notice came out." He said, "Usually I get within the four-day notice, and I see all the time in the Hickory paper notices of these smaller spills of wastewater." He said, "I had no notice until the 10-day notice came out." He said, "I immediately called the Morganton wastewater manager," and he explained that there was a retirement of Mr. Danforth, and so on, and he said, "I think I've done all I need to do, I've made them aware that we drink the stuff, and that they should let us know." But he did go ahead and tell me sort of how things worked in terms of having an emergency plan and a water system management plan, and he said, "There's a credential, a water credential and a wastewater credential in each city." And he said, "I hold a water credential in Hickory, and someone else holds a wastewater credential." And he said, "I said, "Well, what happens if you get run over by a truck?" He said, "By law, there is a second who cannot be less than one degree of license below me who has that credential, so someone always has that credential." Well, as near as I can tell, and again, coming from WMNC, and Charlotte Observer, and Morgan News Herald, that notice, that 48-hour notice did not go out, and both the Valdez Water System and the Hickory Water System were aware that something had been missed. Now, I think that we worked very well when Charlotte tried to steal our water up and down the Catawba River, and I hope that that created a reason for communicating up and down the river. And it seems to me that if there's some reason that there's not the first holder or the second holder available, that possibly the City Manager should call the Valdez Manager, and the Longview Manager, and the Hickory Manager, those are probably, are probably the only ones that are really concerned, and let them know that a spill occurred, because they can, they can start monitoring chloroform, and they can start turning up chlorine, if they know it's coming. So I think you should just monitor your procedures, and make sure that in any contingency, that these things do get passed downstream in an appropriate, if not illegal, way. And I don't think that happened in this case, either appropriate or legal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Steve, we will take your recommendation and deal with it. Thank you very much. Anything Sally, from your desk?
No.
Okay, Minister of Power Agency?
Not tonight.
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda before you tonight includes eight individual items, and the staff considers those items to be non-controversial, and would ask that you consider them in one motion, unless someone has an item that they would like to remove from the consent agenda and have discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those items include two sets of minutes, the regular meeting from January 7th, and a closed session meeting held on January 7th, tax releases in the amount of $95.90, a fair housing plan that is required for HUD as part of our CDBG program, the consideration of job reclassifications for two positions at the community house in conjunction with our restructuring of that facility, the redesign of the Public Safety Data Center, and a budget amendment, this is a partnership that we are in with Valdez and Burke County, and there's some new equipment that needs to be purchased, and this is per an agreement that we have there. The amount that we will be putting into that project is $18,750. And then consideration of including in the schedule of fees and charges, the fees that will be associated with the Compass Business Telephone Service, the new services that we will be offering in the short future, the award of the construction contract for the comma HVAC project, and award of that financing. The bids were re-received, and recommending that we award to the low bidder $210,000 to Triangle Contractors, and the financing for that be awarded to BBNT at 1.54% for a period of five years. And finally, a contract between the City and the Western Piedmont Council of Governments for them to administer the contract relative to the Rural Center Reuse Grant with Sigwork, a local company that is expanding, and included in that would be the project ordinance for that, which is $252,000. And then a budget amendment to receive half of the administrative cost from Burke County, which is $6,000.
Okay.
May I approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Anyone in the audience who'd like to come before the Morganton City Council, doesn't have anything on the agenda later tonight? New business. I'm gonna open up a public hearing to consider rezoning 5.8 acres of property located at 806 Jamestown Road from residential high to general business conditional use submitted by Keith Bowers, Maximum Metals.
This property that is needing to be rezoned is presently split between two zoning districts, has general business and also residential high. The property is situated in an area that is really transitioned from residential to commercial use. There's still a number of residences that remain along Jamestown Road that could have some impacts from this, and so the staff and the planning commission have recommended this rezoning with several conditions. Those conditions are listed in your information, and that would be that the property shall be used for low-density distribution or any similar type of uses. Those would typically be permitted in a general business zoning district, that all business-related operations would be conducted within an enclosed building, and that no outdoor storage of materials, products, displays, and the such would be permitted. Public hearing was advertised in the News Herald, property was posted, and mail notices, first-class mail notices were sent to adjacent property owners.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against? Public hearing's closed, there are two motions, gentlemen.
Motion to certify that the rezoning request is in conformation with Morganton's adopted Mission 2030 Land Development Plan.
I have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Next motion.
Move to adopt an ordinance, rezon in 5.8 acre property located at 806 Jamestown Road with the condition discussed with residential high and general business condition use.
Second. We have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion of this? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. I'd like to open up a public hearing to consider rezoning 2.42 acres of property located at 618 East Meeting Street from general business to light industrial conditional use, submitted by Harold Best, Foothills Fabricator Sally.
This property is approximately 30,000 square feet of buildings originally built for the dairy back in 1949, for dairy distribution, was rezoned from exclusive industrial to a general business use in 1985. It's a fairly small site, has limited parking and truck maneuvering area. The primary purpose of the zoning, obviously, is to minimize any kind of adverse impacts that adjoining property owners would see. In order to do this, as this is gone, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff and planning and zoning recommend approval of it with a list of conditions, and there are seven of those. You have those listed in your information that we sent out. With those conditions, it is the recommendation of the staff and the P and Z that you consider this rezoning. Did have proper advertisement, notices were mailed, the property was posted, and if you want to discuss those, we can go through them, and Lee's here too.
Okay, anyone who'd like to speak for or against? Now has the time. Stand up, state your name, where you reside. Close the public hearing, counsel, two motions.
Motion to certify that this rezoning request is in conformance of Morganton adopted Mission 2030 Land Development Plan.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion of this item? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Next motion.
Make a motion to adopt an ordinance to rezon 2.42 acres of property located at 618 East Meeting Street from general business to light industrial additional use.
Second. Okay, motion second. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, both items approved. All right. Consideration of award of a bid for purchase of public safety vehicle Sally.
In this year's budget, we had planned to replace six public safety vehicles, and what you have before you tonight is the request to award that bid. Would ask that you consider awarding those to Alderton Dodge, which is in High Point, North Carolina. They have been approved to sell these vehicles. The state contractor for this is an out-of-state vendor, and so they receive special permission in order to be able to offer the same price. You see a detail in there of the equipment and the things that go with those vehicles, the public safety package, and everything required for that, asking you to consider awarding that bid in the amount of $234,600.
I've got a question on like that.
Ask away.
I've been on this council, my question's not going to pertain to my vote on this, I'll clarify that, start with. I've been on the council for a little over a year. Prior to being on the council, I attended three or four meetings, and during those three or four meetings, it was discussed about the driving the vehicles home. It was my understanding that the council would get a report on the miles driven back and forth home, the personnel, if they had moved their location, and to my knowledge, we hadn't received it, and I just wondered if we have received it. I'm going by memory, so.
Okay. I know that at the time, talking about the one officer, one car.
Right.
Policy and the take-home vehicles, I know at the time that we prepared all that, we had a map, and we showed you who everybody was, and it's my understanding that it's incumbent upon public safety, and the chief may want to address this as well, that when those officers move or change, that it would be incumbent upon public safety to monitor that, and to do that according to the policy that you all adopted. Now certainly, we could present you a report of that at any time. I did not understand, and maybe the chief had a different understanding, that we were going to do that other than follow the policy that you adopted, and then they were going as a management item in their department, manage that as people changed, and officers moved, and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But now, we're happy to provide that.
Well, like I say, I'm going by memory, so take that into consideration.
If you want to come up and address it.
Because personnel does change there.
I do think that is correct, that upon the initial change in the policy, that we tried to plot, if you will, where everyone that was employed at the time, and who would be driving the cars lived, and I do think there was discussion about if anyone changed, then that could change whether or not they would be able to take a car home. To say that, I came away from that with the notion that we had to present a recurring report on an annual basis, I didn't get that. I understood it to mean that if someone changed, that it was the supervisor's responsibility to, if they heard an employee moved, in other words, if they bought a new home somewhere else, and that changed their location, then they would address that on an individual basis.
Right.
And if I did not follow that correctly, I apologize, but we'll certainly look at it and address it.
This, Mark, this was before.
Yes, sir.
I came on board.
Oh sure, but we're happy to prepare something like that, I don't think that's any kind of problem.
Well, I tell you, the thing, it kind of, I won't say bothers me, I don't think bother is probably the right word, but this is a pretty substantial part of the budget, is driving the vehicles back. I think we just need to know kind of what's going on.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Be able to look at it, and then if we have to make a decision on it, we can make a, we can make a better decision.
We'll certainly speak with supervisors and ensure that we're in accordance with the policy. Sir.
Thank you Chief. Okay, we have a need for a motion.
Motion to award bid for the amount of $234,600 to Elderton Dodge, High Point and C for public safety vehicles.
Second. Have the motion, have a second, discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. I understand the technicalities of the bid, and those that got the bid, and all that sort of thing. I wonder why our local dealer would not be able to get approval from Dodge for this, because we're talking about $234,600 that could be in our local economy, as opposed to it going to some dealership down east someplace. Why couldn't our local dealer apply and got the same kind of permission here? And then when the cars got delivered, we wouldn't have to ride down there and pick them up, and all that sort of thing. Does anybody know the answer to that?
I think that's a question to be posed to the state of North Carolina, for how they go through their state contract price, and what they allow to happen in that process. Last year, if you'll recall, our money went to South Carolina, wasn't it South Carolina? Am I missing a year?
Yeah.
I think it might have been the year before. Anyway, the state contract vendor was in South Carolina.
I'd say, just as a guess, I'd say Alderton Dodge in High Point probably applied or went to Dodge Corporation and made that request, and got it granted.
Twenty-seven years ago, we did do local buying in a lot of cases, but it changed when the state contracts were extremely low compared to what could be done on a local basis, and we buy generally everything through state contract to get the lowest possible price. But, you know, that's not to say it can't be done, but I don't know how that works.
I mean, I understand all that.
Right, right.
I mean, if somebody else.
I don't know what they would have had to have done to do that.
If somebody else can sell the cars.
If the local dealer can match that state contract price, you know, that's, I think that's what Forrest was asking.
I guess all it does is take approval. I wonder why we can't get the approval from a local dealer?
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's move on.
How does that work Karen? Do you know, you want to come to the mic, do you know about how the state contract works?
Yeah, I mean, if anybody, any of the dealers can contact the state and provide a bid. And of course, it's at our, any local dealerships, if they wanted to match or beat the price, that certainly is something we would consider, because we always look beyond the state contract price to see if there is a better deal to be had. But, you know, we haven't had too many experiences where our local dealers have been in a position to offer us what we need in terms of availability, as well as trying to beat the price. So, I mean, we are always happy to do business locally when we can, the law just doesn't afford us the luxury of being able to show preference locally, so that's why we look at state contract. However, they just haven't been able to beat the price. We're in the process right now of buying a small truck for wastewater, just today. We looked at it, and we got local bids, and we went to state contract also.
And those are non-public safety vehicles. Public safety vehicles are a little bit different because of what is required, and the manufacturers and those folks get involved in who is allowed to offer, these are probably the wrong words, and you guys can correct me, the police package, if you will, that the public safety vehicle is different than other vehicles. And so the manufacturers control who they let sell their police packages.
And Eldredton Donak, actually, my understanding was that they were not the state contract recipient, but rather someone who just simply agreed to meet the price. Isn't that true?
Mm-hmm. On state contract, yeah.
So it would be at their discretion to contact the state, any local, any local.
$14,000 worth of special equipment, that's tough to, that's tough to beat. Okay, where we're at?
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? I want to mention that we've got Tristan Loving with us, from Troop 184, attending, getting his Citizenship and Community Merit Badge. Tristan, if there's anything, anything you don't understand of what we're doing, I know you came in a little late, you can come to any meeting you want to come to, we generally meet the first Monday of each month, ask any questions or anything like that. We're privileged to have you, and, because you're our future. And get your, your associate scouts to come with you next time, or any other time. Thank you for being here. Now, this is the unbelievable part of this part, consideration of award of installation purchase financing contract, Sally.
This is the financing contract for the public safety vehicles. We receive, well, we sent out five bids to banks, we received three, all of which were valid bids, and recommend that we award it to the lowest responsive bidder, which was BBNT, and that is for 1.29% interest for three years.
It's an amazing interest Karen, thank you. Thank you for that. And again, we sent that out as a bid and much like we have to do on cars or trucks or whatever, but you've been very fortunate on being able to get the unbelievable rates for us. Thank you very much.
I move to award the installment purchase financing contract for public safety vehicles to BBNT in an interest rate of 1.29% for three years.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of an architectural feasibility contract on behalf of Western Piedmont Community College for their silo barn project, Sally.
You will recall that we have been working with Western Piedmont for a CLG grant, helping them, being the pass-through agent in order for them to get some grant money to help them to do the architectural work in a study. They are trying to redevelop the old silo barn and that part of their campus. They have deposited the funds with the city in order for us to pay for all of this on their behalf. And they had sent out proposals and received seven proposals from various architectural firms to complete this work. And Matthews Architecture is the firm that has been selected by them to do that. Since we're operating as the pass-through agency, we need for you to approve the contract in order for them to do the work. And again, Western Piedmont is paying for that.
I make a motion to approve a contract with Matthews Architecture to conduct a redevelopment feasibility study for Western Piedmont Community College, the Broughton Silo Barn Project.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you want to talk about, I'm gonna read both of these two, Sally, and you can tell us what we're going to be doing. Consideration to enter into a sale, attachment and lease agreement on the Glen Alpin Water Tank with new singular wireless PCS LLC.
The next two items, actually, and also the Valdez Avenue Water Tank have attachments to them, and this is updating and renewing that lease agreement. It's going to be with AT&amp;T. However, they have requested that we postpone this until next month because they are still reviewing bid agreements.
Okay. We don't need to make a motion, do we?
No, I think you just need to defer action.
All right, I defer both of these under V, item five and item six, to a future date.
I was four and five.
Four and five, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Next item is consideration of appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'd like to appoint Joan Malik of 108 Rockview Lane, Morganton, to fill an expired, term to expire on November 8th, 2015, and Ken Volz, 102 Woodsway Lane, Morganton, to fill a term to expire on November 8th, 2014.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we've got two other items. Consideration of advertisement date of unpaid real estate tax, Sally.
Every year, you are required to set the date and the time, the time for us to advertise unpaid real estate taxes, and you need to set that date before the second Monday in February. So we are asking that you consider setting that as April 3rd, 2013. And it is normally the April timeframe when we go through the statutory process of advertising this.
So may.
Okay, motion second. Discussion of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor Earl, two appointments. I'd like to appoint Rema Jean Franklin to the Human Relations Commission, term to expire May 3rd, 2014, and Sandra Bristol to fill a term to expire on May 3rd, 2015. And at this point, no further nominations. Kelly, just be sure that they're alerted, okay? Anything from any of the council members or any of the, or the city manager or anyone else? Alfred, I think Diane's service is 2:00 on Saturday afternoon at First Methodist Church.
Yeah.
Meeting's adjourned.